...thirteen, six P.M., LA City Council Chambers. Ms. Murdock, would you give us a roll call, please?
Mayor James Hobbs.
Here.
Mayor Potem Laughey-Gethry. Dennis Perkins Jr.
Here.
Greg Richards. Frank Jackson.
Here.
And Bruce Sutley.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments? Anybody sign up?
Are you gonna do the invitation?
I apologize, I've got to, okay. Invitation, let's all stand for the invitation. Let's go to the legislature. Thanks.
Lord, we thank you for this day. We ask you to be with us tonight as we conduct this bid in this hearing. Bless each one here and be with those that could not be here tonight. Be with those in our community that need you in a special way, those who are sick, those who are hurting, those who have lost loved ones. And just continue to bless this city and bless each citizen here and forgive us for the time we send against you for asking in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor of Texas. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, citizens' comments now, if there is any. Ms. Murdock?
One second, actually. I have Joan Grobowski.
I'm for the public hearing.
Public, okay.
I had to sign up on that for the public hearing.
She wants to make her comments at the public hearing.
Oh, okay, that's fine. Next.
That's all.
That's it?
I need you to open the public hearing to open the public hearing.
And help me out here.
Just read the line item underneath.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry. Let me read the public hearing, what this is about. Public hearing to receive public input regarding the proposal 2013-2014 annual operating budget for the city of Italy. Do we have a list of those?
No, you can open it at six oh three.
I'm opening at six oh three.
Okay, my first question is, who first brought up the subject of giving the police chief the $9,000 raise? Who was approached or how was that discussed?
It was discussed once I got the paperwork, and I think it came from Terry Murdock and then it came from Chief Dyer Gill.
During open records, I asked for a copy of the documentation that states the city of Italy has a policy, you know, the city of Italy has, you know, paid their department at $60,000. I received a copy of an employee payroll list with one employee's salary on it. That tells me the city has no written policy that definitely states a department head gets $60,000 a year.
Ms. Murdock?
That's correct.
So I hope you guys have the guts to do the right thing, because you were elected to represent the citizens of this city. I've known no one that ever got a $9,000 a year raise at one time. And I hope you guys have the guts to do the right thing. And on page one of the general fund, you're paying EDC administration $9,600 a year. Okay? In the city council meeting on September fourteenth, two thousand nine, there was an agreement between the city of Italy and Economic Development Board to pay the city's administrator $800 a month for a one-year contract with the city for administrative services, and it was supposed to have been revisited in a year.
And it was not, was it?
And it was not. And I want to know, when there are no EDC meetings, does the administrator still get paid?
She declares that she does.
So if she's getting paid for meetings, why, if there are no meetings, does it continue?
I don't get, I don't get just for meetings, because we still have bank statements to do, I still have financial statements to do, I still have...
I can answer that. I'm on the Economic Development Board, I'm helping with that.
Ms. Murdock?
And we did revisit our budget this year. We might have revisited that line item, but we did revisit our budget, and we did approve the $9,600 that the city administrator didn't pay. And everything else on here was addressed. I just want to make that clear. I don't know anything about, you know, I understand what you're reading, but this has been revisited at our meeting in August or September, whenever we had our last meeting.
Of last year?
This year.
This year?
This year. We just sent you the budget. This one that is on the back of here, this one here, has just been approved within the last thirty days by the EDC.
Yeah, it's in our hand on the back page.
Yes, ma'am.
And if I may, I don't get $800 a month. I get, my bring home pay is four hundred, little over $400. And originally, it was discussed that I wanted $600, and what I did is I took out the taxes, I took out the TMRS, I took out everything, brought all of that down, and I only make 500 versus the eight. The rest of it is for pens, papers, coffees.
When we had the discussion in EDC about someone, because somebody said at the time, I think I was a secretary, and they asked me, you know, would I do all the paperwork for EDC, which I don't think I'm qualified to do that, and I don't have the time to come up here and spend on doing that. I did not want to do it, so it was voted by the entire EDC that the city administrator does it. Now, she's not getting in her pocket that money. That's paid to the city, that $800 is paid to the city, and the city pays her whatever that you all decided to pay her out of that, but she has administrative power for that. There's a lot of paperwork that's just EDC paperwork, because, you know, EDC money is separate from, well, the city, but it's separate from your operating budget, so that's coming out of EDC money exclusively. I think that, I don't even know if a portion of that is going to the laundry or whatever, but it's not all going to the city administrator.
Is some of that going to it?
No, they have a line item budget for their...
Do you have line items for pens, papers, and et cetera for them? Or has it come out of the administration?
It comes out of just, comes out of administration.
Okay.
The $800 is paid to the city, is paid to the city of Italy.
Okay, well, that explains that then.
What's that, Ms. Joan?
About the EDC and the money, that they approved it, you know? But you need to consider as well, you know, in the meeting Monday night, Dean said the dump truck died, and he needs a vehicle, because he cannot use his own personal vehicle in town here anymore. You know, and you don't have any of that in the budget for it. Just like last year, when he, you know, there were all these problems with water, it cost tens of thousands of dollars that we didn't have in the budget, but it was stuff that needed fixed, you know? You need to think ahead.
A lot of it, can I say something, Mr. Mayor? A lot of it, you can't use EDC money for the city, you can't use EDC money for the water department. It has come out of the budget.
Right, no, I understand that, but, you know, all the other items in here.
Mayor, can I speak on reference to her first line item?
What is, what?
In regards to my wage. I mean, Terry spoke on her behalf, I guess I could...
Oh, I understand what the city's personal line item is, I have it.
I don't think that it's gonna dispute.
You know?
Well, I mean, I think I should have a right to explain some things.
Do you want to?
Yes, sir, I would. There is a policy that does state that, and I will read it. It's section seven point zero four, bases for salary reviews and increases. The city council will, will, at least annually, review salaries and wages of all city employees and make any necessary adjustments. Determination of salaries and wages will be based on the principle of equity among positions, requiring similar knowledge, abilities, and skill, as well as prevailing rates of pay among public and private employees, the duties, responsibilities, and qualifications required for the position, and other relevant factors. Well, here's the thing. Last year, my officers got raises, and I was asked if I wanted a raise, and I turned it down, because I put my officers first. I just found out this year that Dean is making $60,000 a year. This is the first that I've heard of that. And I think, and I think I'm asking for what's right, based on what this policy says, because I, I'm sorry, but if he is a director of his position, and I'm a director of my position, it's only right that I be given equal pay, and that's what I'm asking for. Now, it's the will of this city council, whether or not they will approve that or not. I'm at their will, but I'm asking for consideration based on what the policy says and what's right. And it may be a $9,000 raise, what you can ask is, why is he making $9,000 more than me? That's what you should ask yourself, and that's what you should ask yourself, city council, when you approve this budget. And I think it's only right. And again, like I said, I put my officers first the last two years, I made sure I got their pay up to where they were somewhat adequate and comparable to some other agencies around here. There's still a lot of work to do, okay? And so, I put them first before me. Thank you.
Yes, that was his personal decision. You don't have the right to give a $9,000 raise, because there is no policy, written policy in the city that said a department head gets $60,000.
Exactly.
The budget was basically put together, like he put it together, took it to her, which is Ms. Murdock, and then they distributed it between the city council and gave me a copy.
He put the budget together. Department head is former.
Mr. Farmer?
Yeah, I kind of want to address that with Chief Hill's raise. Personally, I think he deserves that raise. If there's a department head that falls in line and that gets him to fall in line, that's fine. I think a lot of people are kind of looking at the car situation, saying, hey, well, you are in line with the other department heads if you tailor in the car. If you take that car, that factor out, I think he needs to get a raise. And honestly, I think it needs to be a little more higher than $60,000, you know, and just to throw a number, let's say $65,000, but you take that car away. Now, if he decides to move closer, you know, within fifteen minutes or thirty minutes to the city, then you give him that car back, because I do believe that a chief should have a car if he's within a certain mileage. I think that's kind of why everybody's kind of really harping on the raise. But I do believe that he needs to be in line with the other department heads, but that car, the factor of the car needs to be taken out.
And I'm glad you brought it up as well, because I just went into my office a little bit ago and averaged how much it costs me, how much it costs the city per year for me to drive back and forth based on my latest receipts, and that was right at $400 a month. That would be somewhere about $5,000 for the year, right? And since he just said that, you know, I should be making somewhere between sixty, you know, $60,000 and $65,000 with my car and this raise, that would bring me in line to what he just said.
Say my last word, yeah?
Well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna compute my car into the equation, that's $5,000, and he just said that maybe that the police chief needs to be making $65,000, if you add the $60,000 plus the $5,000 for the comparable for the car, that would be $65,000, so...
Is that what you said?
Yeah, that's what I said.
Okay.
And so, he's right.
Yeah, and I guess, let me go ahead and, you look at these officers, right, and they protect and serve. And I'm not saying Dean doesn't do a good job, and I'm not saying the administrator does a good job, but if you look at their line of duty, what they actually do for this community, they protect and serve, they put their lives on the line every night that they come in. I mean, me personally, I sleep better at night if I know officers are around twenty-four hours a day. So in my eyes, I think it's justifiable to pay a little more for the police to be on the streets. Now, can we cut budgets elsewhere? Absolutely, I have several places where I've looked through that we can cut budgets. For example, our attorney, we've allotted $20,000. What's that? Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we allotted $20,000 for our attorney for the year. I believe that attorney lives in McKinney, so we can cut that probably in half if we found somebody in Ellis County.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you live in Richardson, but can I say something, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
On the budget, as far as putting the budget together, I was on the assumption that the mayor and the department heads got together on the budget.
The mayor got together with Dean and Ms. Murdock.
Okay.
That's all I got together with. Nobody else came forward with the budget.
There was actually two meetings that were back here in the back that I wasn't invited to.
It wasn't about budget.
Ms. Murdock, you did have his budget that you did present to this council, is that correct?
I did.
Okay.
Any other citizens' comments?
May I just ask, when a couple meetings of our, I think it was what it means, there was a pay increase list over on the table, it had administrator, police chief, a council chair, and water clerk, and looking at that, and somebody asked a question, and I think we have the, we got a couple more salaries here, but these are not all the salaries of administration. It looks like the proposed budget for the new year for salaries and raises of administration only is $152,278. I would like to know how many employees fall under that category, and does the water, another person, a fourth person that fall under that, how many people fall under this Who's in that?
Can you answer that, Ms. Murdock?
Yes, four.
Four, okay, thank you.
Who are these?
Me, Rhonda, Clarice, I'm sorry, three.
The mayor.
And the mayor's salary.
The mayor's salary.
And the city council too. Let me look here. No, city, well, city council is listed separately, but it is, it's Rhonda, myself, and Clarice, and then the mayor's salary is included, is included in salaries and wages.
For general or administrative?
For general administration.
So, out of this $152,000, we have the city administrator, we have the city secretary, and council clerk.
Yes, and the mayor.
And the mayor.
Does Becky get paid out of the water budget?
Yes.
Does this have Ms., the lady from...
Rashonda?
Yes.
No, she's in the court department, in the court, that's your part of this.
Because half of it was coming out of water and sewer, or what was the deal there?
We transferred Rashonda all the way over to administration, yet she's going to be shared with the public works director as far as having a secretary for them. Now, we haven't worked out the details as to whether she's going to be over here doing that, or whether she's going to go back and forth. There is an office over there, and there are certain things that she needs to take care of in that office, but we haven't worked out all the details on how we're going to share. Right now, she's coming over here, and she's working all day Tuesday and all day Thursday.
Back to my question, if I take, if I take your salary out of this $152,000, and that's like, what, $85,000?
Well, you have to understand too, that the EDC pay is in there, because it goes into the revenue side, it also comes out on the general side, and it's in with the salaries.
Well, that's because I have $600. Later, I'll just get those salaries. I would just like to know what those, how that's broken down.
Okay.
Because I really don't know anything except just what you're making out of that.
Well, you know what, I mean, what did Rhonda, Rhonda, what did you make? Do you know how much you made?
They gave that at the other meeting, I know how much she made.
Forty thousand.
It's forty-one thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars, what you said at the last budget meeting.
Yes.
Mayor, how much, how much was yours? Sixty plus?
Her's fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, one hundred right now, plus the EDC, or the...
Yeah.
It just, you know, it just concerns me that two people in administration in a town like Italy is making $100,000, so just, I mean, that's just...
Well, it's actually three, plus the mayor.
No, I said a hundred thousand. I said the entire budget.
Pay on the police budget, then, you're wanting to increase it like by $43,000, so how many people are being paid out of the police budget?
Page you on, Ms....
Oh, page seven.
Forty-three thousand.
What?
She's saying it's increased by forty-three thousand thirty-five.
Forty-one, forty-one, one?
Because his actual budget was two oh six, five sixteen.
But we also took out animal control out of that line and moved it into the sixty-four hundred. So that was, that was $30,000 right there, so it's not $41,000.
You see that, Missy?
Oh, so the second, the thirty thousand, eight ninety-four, goes up into that, the second line goes up into the first one?
Yes.
Okay.
Because she does multiple jobs, the police, she does the code enforcement and animal control, so she's doing kind of three things at once.
Let me ask you something, Terry, okay, with the courts and the police department, they're bringing in $350,000? So they're bringing in, Manwell and the court, and then the police department, they're bringing in three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Actually total, they're $380,000.
I see three fifty there.
Well, it's not all of them.
When was, where's the other fifty? I guess I lost what you said.
Uh, let's see.
The municipal court, actual to date, twenty thirteen, twelve, thirteen, is at three seventy-one, six twenty, oh nine, and that was of last week. So, we're, it's projected that we're gonna, that the courts will do $380,000. It's highly possible that that amount's gonna go up.
What page is that on?
Two, and that's on revenues. And eleven, twelve...
Eighty percent of our budget, wouldn't that be right? About eighty percent of the police department budget.
In eleven, twelve, the court fines, fees and fines was $407,883. So it dropped this year, you know, this last year, it did drop, but it's been, it's been coming back up. And part of that is due to the fact that we've got the, sorry, Lombarder doing our collections, and he's been bringing, they've been bringing in a lot of collections, and they don't charge the city for doing it, they charge a thirty percent fee to the person with the fine, and it doesn't go to them until it's gone to warrant. Once it goes to warrant, they hunt these people down, they move ten times, they keep hunting them down. And so far, they've brought in, they've brought in a lot of revenue, generated a lot, and it's cleared out a lot of our old warrants, really old warrants, two thousand four, two thousand six, five and six, so... The other thing to take note too is on our revenues, right now, with the Dollar General that came in, sales tax revenues are on the rise, and a statement was made by Susan Combs, the comptroller, is that the state of Texas was up like six point something percent overall. And so, right now, we're on a, we're on a growth up, because Family Dollar hasn't been here six months, and, you know, Taco Bell hasn't been here six months. We don't know what kind of revenues that they're going to be generating and how much. We've got a new place coming in down the street, a motorcycle shop. So, there's revenues generated and that, that we don't know how much yet, because they haven't been here long enough to even be able to calculate with what we've got. So I expect our revenues to be more than what we've projected here.
And I think you bring in almost, you're gonna build $300,000 sales tax this year. That was the projection of last year, and I know what I left in May, we projected over $300,000, but this year, this, because this is the last month, no, this month, I'll go in it.
No, September was the last month, and we were two point seven for the...
We're probably at $300,000.
One point something, or two point something for the whole year, and I don't have it with me, that's what I was looking for.
On an average, how often do you run out the community center?
That's been kind of slow. We're only, we're only charging $100 an hour, $30 an hour, and we'll wait and deposit so that we, to get people to do, to want to use it or rent it or whatever, but it's slow, nobody, you know, right now, it's slow. We do have, I'm sorry, we do have the LA Opry that uses it, there's a 4H group that uses the, uses the center. This whole summer, we had a Girl Scout group that came in and used it. So we do have community activity that's using the building that's not getting charged.
Because you have, you know, like, you're projecting $3,000, I mean, is that, you may not get, I mean, I know it's just an estimate, though, but if it's not being used in, you may not get that.
We may not, but as I said too, you know, working a budget is guessing, it's just, it's trying to make an educated guess, and you want to hope that you can increase the activity at the community center, so...
I would like to say that, Terry, I really appreciate everything you do, I really think you're very knowledgeable, you know, just about the communities, and I think that's just advertising, a glitch, because when we first started with the community center, the fees were excessive, and I don't think we've ever had a call back to the city or the community that surrounded the areas that the prices have dropped. And so, practically, we put an effort into doing that, some people will use it.
And I agree, I think that we should, we should put it out there and do a little bit more advertising and selling ourself. You know, there's things that we could reach out to in, even in the neighboring communities that we haven't, we haven't had the opportunity to do that, we've been, because we wear so many hats, there's a whole lot of things that don't necessarily, you know, that should be done, that could be done, that could promote that, that we either don't have time, we get caught up in something else, or whatever, that we haven't promoted that. A colored brochure, a flyer, a pamphlet, something, a whole advertising package for the city needs to be done.
Would that be the city, though, or the EDC to do that?
It could be both, it could be in conjunction.
Can I say something? Mr. Garcia, you rented, is there anything you can tell us that maybe we could do better since y'all use it?
I'm glad you asked me that, because...
I'm sorry, and Albert did, has rented it.
Yeah, we rented it for all day Thanksgiving.
Right, right.
I think an open house or a tour through the facility would be excellent, because that's as complete and as nice a facility as you could hope to rent for any kind of activity. One of the things that we looked at in the backyard, it's pretty smooth and everything, and if it had some swings, or maybe a barbecue grill, or something that could happen out there in the back, would add to the attraction. It's a very nice facility and...
Back there originally was parking, and so it's paved, and, not paved, but it's got a good rock base out there on that property, it's just got grass on it too, but it is a smooth... It's just got grass on it too. But it is a smooth area. You know, if you're having, say, your function for the, for Thanksgiving, you can park there. And there is a pathway to go around back behind that, the other building.
Yeah.
So, it's not like you're trapped back there. So, but yeah, that's it, that's it.
Well, you know, the Opry, they don't charge people to come into the Opry. But they do come early. They stop out there, buy food. They, they buy stuff in town. They buy gasoline. And they go back and talk about what a nice facility we have. Every Opry that I go to, and I try to go to all of them, I have people come up and thank me for having the place for them to come and to play and to sing and to entertain. And they're all real pleased with it and look forward to coming down here every month.
But does everybody in there know that they can rent it? If you have congregation go in there of a hundred people, and they went to an event and they think that the Opry can rent it, but do they know that them in attendance can rent it? That would be something to have in there to say.
Maybe some flyers.
For flyers. For everyone that goes in there, be it a visitor or be it someone here, that they know, I don't have to have a band. I don't have to have an event. We can rent it. Our family's doing Thanksgiving there because we're gonna bring more people there. You know, so it could be any time, day and area they can rent it. Not just the organization.
Well, one thing I had never thought of, and I don't know why, but we can always put a, a community center available for, available for rent. You know, we can put that on the marquee at any time. We can also put it in the, on the near trip.
Put it on the door and mark it as community center.
I think, I think the negative part started when the first guy was in the center.
Yeah, I think if these things are low, I think it's gonna grab everybody's eye.
Well, I've had, I've had a lot of people calling, request, and asking about it and talking about it, and that's what I, what I tell them, you know. And I, I still tell them we need that deposit, but I'll tell them I'll give it back because, you know, I don't want to take the, the chance that something gets messed up there that we don't get to, you know, so it's, we'll hold your deposit when, when we make sure that everything's okay.
Okay, on page three, city cleanup. How many is that? Is that the two, two cleanups?
Actually, um...
The one?
That's gonna be about one.
That's one?
Mm-hmm. And we are planning, um, we've discussed it, the chief and I have discussed having one. And we, we were planning on September, but that hasn't worked out in October.
Well, the reason the police department kind of took the forefront on this is because we have a lot of code enforcement issues around town. And, but the problem is, is when we go to the people and say, you need to clean up your yard, need to get rid of this, need to do that, that the first thing that comes out of their mouths is, we don't want to know where to take it. And I, I have to agree with them, you know. It's hard to find a place to go take tires and all that other stuff or limbs or...
Yeah, but we can't take tires.
And we're, we're gonna work on that. We're gonna try to work on a company that maybe will, in conjunction with the cleanup, will provide us with some kind of thing. But we want to be able to say, okay, citizens, if we're telling you that you gotta clean up your properties, we're gonna try to give you some avenue to get some things thrown away and so forth. And then, and then, once that time has passed, then we're gonna start coming after people on their property that are not keeping it up. And that's what y'all tasked as, as a police department to do, and that's what we're going to do. But we're also, we keep in mind the fact that we want to give the citizens opportunities to have somewhere to take all of their trash and their garbage and whatnot. I talked to Terry about it. I said that we were looking at September and we thought that's too close. It's also too hot still. And we're looking hopefully in October to have a citywide cleanup day where everybody in the city will be involved in, in cleaning up different areas and, and their own properties and the city properties and, you know, everywhere that will make us look good. That's what we're planning on doing.
Okay, you still have the dumpster by the water plant for, but, and I know at one time the, the rates were discussed and everything. But if anybody has anything to take there, I mean, if you see what they have, you determine then how much you're charging.
And we dropped the rates on that too. And still, you know, I, and I'm sorry to say it, but they want it for free. Most people want it free.
And that's only open, what, certain days though?
Tuesdays and Thursdays, but we do have somebody that's at the sewer plant most of the time now, so it could be any day.
But you have to go by City Hall first?
Mm-hmm.
See, I didn't, I really didn't know that. So, I, we, we have a lack of communication because I really didn't know that was open.
Said you missed that meeting.
I missed that meeting because I didn't know that. But it was a good, it's a good thing. One funny time, I know it's not, probably not concept back in there, but, uh, instead, they used to send out a, a city newsletter. If you could just do a water bill or something to let people know whether everybody had a water bill. You know, Sam was...
I can volunteer you for that.
Don't put me in his budget.
No, not if you volunteer. I just want to say that what I said about the chief and Terry has, has nothing personal to do with them. I'm just looking at the budget for the city, the welfare of the city, you know, and, because, I mean, times aren't, aren't, aren't good for everybody.
Did we, we didn't, we didn't raise, this, this is not gonna raise any taxes. We didn't, we didn't raise taxes on any of this, did we?
Mr. Plant, do you have anything to say about your department?
Not this time. Everything's looking good. We're, again, we're looking at trying to get some new equipment. We're looking at pricing now. So, we're gonna research every avenue and try to get the best price we can to save money. And so, Deena, myself, and Terry, and Mayor, we're all looking at different avenues of what to take and see which way we can do it. Because there are several things that don't put dead dollars. And that poor thing is the nineteen eighty-two model. So, you know, it's, do you throw more money at it, or do you get something that's gonna last you some time and be safe for the guys to drive? That one's a little tricky to drive. So, you know, we want the guys to be safe because I care about each one of my guys. So, we're gonna look at those things. And unfortunately, sometimes it will cost us a little bit more money in the front half. But the things we can do with that to better help the citizens and stuff, that's what we're looking at. So, we can better provide a better service for you guys every day.
Garcia, you got anything?
No.
Anybody, any?
No, I was just thinking about when you were talking about trash and everything. And I think he's right. You have to have someplace to offer, um, an affordable area to dump or spot to dump. Otherwise, they'll dump it on the side of the road or off the bridge or, you know, something in the middle of the night, you know, dropping stuff on it.
Grab that roll set, big old counter, man, up there.
Yeah.
That's true. Any council member have a question about your budget or concerns? Councilman Guthrie?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Richard? Councilman Odom?
Well, I'm concerned to the extent that, you know, we don't have any, we're not saving any money or putting anything back. We're running day fund. I don't know how we'd go about doing something like that for the maintenance department and all. And I fully believe that the, the chief and his department and everything, they're doing a great job. And I really believe that the salary is justified. So, that's all I've got.
Councilman Perkins? Councilman Jackson?
Uh, yes, sir. We do have a contingency plan for the, for the city as a whole. I mean, it's like something happened like it happened in West and where like that. And we do have, you know, with so much money set aside, Terry, for like, for a month or...
Well, it's, it's based on our audit and, um, they like for us to have like six months in reserve.
We do have something like that.
Our last, our last audit, um, was good, but this year's kind of taken that down a little bit, especially in the waterfront.
Yeah.
So, it's something that we're, that even in the budget, we tried to, to adjust for.
We do have some, you know, we, we're not, we're not spending every dime we got. Because you, you have to, you have to have a contingency plan in case something does, does happen and emergency does come up. That's all.
Okay, thank you. No new questions? All right. Okay, if that's all on the public hearing, I'm gonna close the public hearing and go into, uh, regular session. Regular session, discuss and consider necessary actions regarding the approval of continuation of coverage administrative agreement with TML interlocal and goli benefit rule. Ms. Murdock, you want to explain what this is?
This is just our paper work that we have to send in to Texas Municipal League on our insurance policies. We didn't change anything. Nothing has been changed at all. And this is just the agreement. They send one through every, um, every, every year in open, during open enrollment. They usually have to have this agreement prior to, um, our city council meetings. And it's, it's usually right in the wrong time that they want it back. Because we didn't have any changes, there wasn't anything to, for y'all to approve yet. I wanted to put it on the agenda to approve it since it states on here, the agreement entered into and for, under authorization of at the duly called meeting. So, because of that, I just wanted to make sure that it was on our minutes, that we did bring it to city council, even though we were told by TML, go ahead and sign it, send it in and get it, get it to us so that we got that documentation for our records.
You know, any other discussions about this?
I make a motion that we approve the continuation of coverage administrative agreement.
I've got, I've got a, say it again, Mr. Perkins. Say it, what'd you say?
I make a motion that you approve the continuation of coverage administrative agreement.
I've got a motion for the continuation of administrating, of administration agreement. Here, a second.
I said it.
Seconded by Councilman Jackson. Regular session B, discuss.
Yeah.
Oh, we got a vote, man. All in favor? Okay, all approved. Okay, item B, discuss and considering necessary actions regarding the review and approval of Italy EDC Economic Development Fiscal Year two thousand thirteen to two thousand fourteen budget. Buddy, Ms. Bell, you, Terry, do you need to, like, say anything about that?
Just about that before this, uh, before the EDC in our last meeting. And, uh, we shifted some funds around. We did make some changes, but this is approved by the entire EDC board.
Ms. Murdock, you got anything to add to that?
No, sir.
Any discussion from council side?
Make a motion to approve the budget for the EDC?
I've got a motion to approve the EDC fiscal year budget two thousand thirteen. And I've got a second by Councilman Richards. We have a vote. Are they all in favor? All in favor. Item C, discuss and considering necessary actions regarding ordinance number thirteen oh nine one nine dash zero one and ordinance adopting the budget, a budget for the general operating fund and water sewer fund for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand thirteen and ending September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. You have any discussions about that, Ms. Murdock?
No.
You happy?
Make a motion we adopt ordinance, ordinance number one three dash oh nine one nine dash oh one.
Got a motion to...
I'll second it.
Councilman, I'll at least second it. All in favor? All. Item D, discuss and consider necessary actions regarding ordinance number thirteen oh nine one nine dash zero two and ordinance of the city council of the city of Italy, Texas, adopting the tax rate and levying, level, levying ad valorem taxes for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen on all taxable property within the corporate limit, city limits, the city of Italy, Texas, as of January one, two thousand thirteen, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date. Ms. Murdock, is there any discussion about that you'd like to make?
No, sir. Well, I can just say that our, um, our last year's total, uh, this year's total taxes went down. Last year's tax base was forty-nine, uh, forty-nine...
What am I reading?
Yeah, sorry.
What was?
Forty-nine million eight hun- eighty-nine dollars, seven hundred and forty-three, and went down, down to forty-eight million, four hundred and twelve thousand dollars and forty-six, uh, uh, forty-six dollars, um, which was from, what, the city collective would've been five hundred and forty-three oh thirty-one for last year, down to four hundred and eighty-nine, six sixty-seven this year. Our appraisals went down. And we still maintain our tax rate. Last year was point nine nine six zero six zero. This year's effective rate, that is based on the debt service and, um, on the debt service, is one point zero one one four five six, which is, um, the twenty thirteen tax rate equal to the effective tax rate of one point one one oh, one point zero one one four five six for one hundred value taxes with decrease compared to twenty twelve by one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars.
Any other discussions on item D? Must be approved ordinance number thirteen dash oh nine one nine dash six. Okay, I've got a... To approve, uh, the, the number thirteen oh nine one nine dash oh two.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Guthrie.
If I could get a roll call, and I need to go back and re, revisit number C as well for a roll call. I'm sorry.
Go ahead. You want to do a roll call, Ms. Murdock?
If, if, uh, yes, sir. Mayor Procham, Rodney Guthrie?
Approved.
Greg Richards?
Aye.
Bruce Utley?
Approved.
Dennis Perkins?
Aye.
Frank Jackson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Need a roll call on C also?
Yes, we need to go back and revisit C. I need a roll call on that as well.
I apologize. I thought we were doing C. Was that D that we just did?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's go back up to C and do a roll call for C, item C.
We had a motion by Rodney Guthrie to approve and a second by Bruce Utley. I'm sorry, give me one second. Mayor Procham, Rodney Guthrie?
Approved.
Greg Richards?
Approved.
Bruce Utley?
Approved.
Dennis Perkins?
Aye.
Frank Jackson?
Approved.
Thank you.
Okay, so, item C is the actual budget approved?
Correct.
Okay. Councilman member comments? Any comments? Councilman Guthrie?
We want to thank, or I want to thank everybody coming out and giving their opinions and concerns. This staff works very hard every year. This is kind of a tough time for us and a long time for us to get this done. And y'all's input is, we do take that into consideration. And I myself personally believe what we've done here today is, is for the better and the benefit of the city. And we will, uh, look forward to another, hopefully, growing fiscal year for this next year. Thank y'all for your help.
Thank you, Councilman Guthrie. Councilman Richard?
I'd love to thank everybody for coming tonight, and our employees. I know you work hard. Been out of work for a while, and I've been able to get out and, and run around town a little bit, and I see how hard you guys work, and I appreciate it, and, uh, I appreciate the citizens. And, uh, we all have one goal in mind, let's make Italy the best place in the world we live in. And, uh, hopefully, we're on our right track to get that done.
Thank you. Councilman Murdock, you have anything?
Appreciate all the citizens that attended these workshops and their opinions, and, we did take all of that into consideration, and I just appreciate all of them. And we just hope that we make Italy a better city to live in, and I appreciate all the department heads and all of what they do.
Thank you, Councilman Murdock. Councilman Perkins?
I'd also like to thank all the citizens for coming out, uh, on tonight. I'd like to thank our city administrator, Ms. Murdock, um, for preparing this budget. I'd also like to, um, thank you, chief, for your leadership and your contributions, and also for being in, in his absence. And to all the employees that are here, thank you all for everything that you do to keep this city up and running. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank all the citizens for coming out tonight. I think we do have a good group of, uh, department heads, as well as, uh, employees. We have a wonderful court clerk sitting back there, he's quiet tonight, and, but, I appreciate all the hard work everybody's been doing, and, uh, thank you. And this, this, I mean, we got ten days for the year to end, so hopefully have a better year.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson.
You're welcome.
Ms. Murdock?
Also, I need to find out from the, the council if they can be at a meeting on September the 26th. It shouldn't be a very long meeting, to approve the bills, final bills for the year and to ratify the budget.
Two hundred and six is on Thursday.
Thursday.
Six o'clock?
Yes.
Can we call meeting?
Yes. And it's last, I mean, literally takes about fifteen minutes. Get that. Is that good for everyone?
That's the next week, six o'clock on Thursday.
Next Thursday, it's actually next Thursday. Okay, that's, that's okay with you, uh, Frank?
Yes, sir.
Rodney?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Pretty good with everybody, uh, I won't, I will not be able to attend. I'll be gone, uh, just.
Oh, I thought you were just gonna be gone on Tuesday, but you'd be back on Thursday.
No, no, I should be back on the 27th.
Oh, okay.
Or the 28th.
Well, we have to, I apologize, we have to finalize this, finalize the, and ratify the, the current budget and approve the final bills, um, prior to the end of the month. And Monday's too late.
Which Monday?
The 30th.
The 30th is too late?
Yes, we have to get it all finalized before the 30th.
Does it, uh, does it dictate that I be here?
No, not, I mean, not, not necessarily, but I need to.
Councilman Guthrie do it?
Yeah.
Is that all of you?
Yes, sir, I'll be.
All right. Okay, I want to thank all the citizens for coming out. Know that the department heads worked hard, including you, chief, uh, you know, it's not, didn't go unnoticed. But I do appreciate all the questions that citizens have, and questions that the council members have to these department heads, and everybody has accountability, and we, we have to be accountable to you. And, uh, if there's nothing else, nothing else, Ms. Murdock, we're going to adjourn. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.